After this.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ask if there is anyone here who wishes to address the board. All right, thank you. Item three, which should take a better part of our time today, will be the purchase of the property for new high school.
You bet. Thank you, President Alberti. Well, as you well know, on September 18th this last year, the voters of Sioux Falls approved a $190 million bond issue, bond referendum, in part to construct a new high school. And the charge from that task force regarding the new high school was multiple. One, they said that the building should be built on the northwest quadrant of the community. And two, we should get that building built as quickly as we can, preferably to be opened in 2021 or for sure by 2022. Said that the school should maintain our district's north to south boundaries in order to maintain our balanced student populations, and that the school board should consider the gift of land that came to us from the Sanford Health Corporation to determine whether or not that land was appropriate for the new high school. Architecture Incorporated and DLR, they were hired as the architects for our new high school, and part of the responsibility of that partnership was to guide us through the site selection process. I was assigned, or I assigned a steering committee consisting of district personnel, the architect team, and two board members with the purpose of guiding the district through the overall management of the projects for this bond referendum, but all, and everything included in that $190 million referendum. As part of that steering committee, two committees have been appointed. One is a high school design subcommittee, and a second committee is a high school site selection subcommittee. The high school site selection subcommittee considered eight possible sites in the northwest quadrant of the city where a high school could be located. Forty-five acres of land was needed, and the subcommittee had to access, or had access to city planners, engineers, and other subject matter experts. The subcommittee, in conjunction with the architecture team, then narrowed the possible sites for further soil testing and a development analysis. A deep review of each site was conducted that included site development factors such as access to utilities, dirt work, et cetera. Other factors were also reviewed, including zoning annexation, surrounding development, and transportation accessibility. Through an outside attorney, the subcommittee worked to secure land purchase proposals from landowners. Upon review of the cost of the land, site development costs, and other factors such as zoning annexation, surrounding development, and transportation accessibility, the subcommittee recommends a site offered by the Journey Development Company and Journey Land Company located between Marion Road and North Terry Avenue. In addition to the above considerations, the recommended site stood out because of its close proximity to the Career and Technical Education Academy, New Tech High School, and the Southeast Technical Institute. With that, I would turn it back over to you.
As we begin the conversation about the property and the decision that we will need to make, we need to get, I think, a little extra input probably from Board Member Nicholson and Board Member Tulkey, since they did sit on that site selection committee, and of course, input from the other three of us, since all five of us are going to participate in making the final decision. So, you know, as Brian said, the main thing was at least 40 acres, preferably 45 plus, to be able to do everything right. I know that some of the conversation that was had was around easy access, the streets and infrastructure, some there, some that's going to need to be added, which will, of course, add to the cost of the total project, and all of those things were taken into consideration as the committee came to the recommendation of the land near CTE and Southeast Tech, so.
It was a fun process, but a thorough process. As Dr. Maher just went through, there was a lot of things to consider, and we considered all those and weighed everything out and came up with what I think is probably the absolute best place for our students to enjoy a new high school.
As President Alberti mentioned, it was not just the 45 acres, but we needed 40 acres of buildable site as well. And what was taken into consideration by the committee was, you know, basically a very exhaustive list, and then we came up with monetary factors to see what those would be to get the land ready for the building, and that's what led that decision, as well as timing, as we noticed, you know, getting through the zoning and so forth and getting approval, where we could do that and meet the task force recommendations on doing that. Another important factor to me was public transportation at our high schools. We don't currently bus most of our students, they use public transportation, and where that would fit in best with the city planning on public transportation as well. So, it was a very thorough process, lots of questions were answered, and I think everybody felt very comfortable with the decision we ended up recommending.
As we go through the conversation, one of the things that I want to make sure that we do is be transparent, as transparent as we possibly can. As we discuss the eight different sites that we looked at, one of the things that I think we need to commit to doing is not discuss price for all of those other pieces of ground that we don't select, and I think, for me, that's mostly out of respect for the landowners. Those pieces of property will be on the commercial market at some point, and I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that those pieces of ground were under consideration by us. We didn't choose those, but for those owners to be able to market those fairly and to get the best price that they can, that's information that I think we, unfortunately, we can't share. So, the price of the piece that we end up buying, if that is the journey piece, of course, that will be part of our public record, and that will be known to everyone, so.
And Board Member Tulkey and I would be open to any questions any other board members have.
One of the, one of the things that I've thought about in that area of town is an area that I've spent a lot of time in. My parents and my grandparents live just a few miles north of there, so I spend a lot of time driving by there. For me, one of the things that I've looked at on that whole area is drainage issues or potential drainage issues, and some of the sites that I looked at were pieces of ground that had some lower area that may be wetlands area, I suppose, so accommodations would need to be made, and I think we had enough pieces of ground to look at that those were things that we could easily avoid by eliminating certain pieces of ground that had the drainage issues for what we needed to do.
A few of the sites needed dirt brought in, and I think that was a cumbersome issue that we had to consider.
Yes, definitely. And, you know, the exciting thing for the district is the synergy this site has with, as Dr. Maher mentioned, with Southeast Tech, with the career technical education as well as New Tech, it's just, it's going to be, it could be the potential for an outstanding campus for our school district and really use resources we already have and use them even better than we are right now.
I think, too, we not really talked about the Sanford land, and that's not really the elephant in the room, but I think it's important that as we move forward, first of all, we are very appreciative of Sanford's generous offer of that piece of ground. We said in all of the public input sessions, the task force meetings, even before that, as we were doing the sessions at all of the schools, that piece of ground would be given equal consideration, and what we needed to try to do is pick the absolute ideal spot for us to build a new high school that is going to be a 75 to 100-year decision, and we needed to make the right decision. Sanford has been, and I know will continue to be, a great partner for our public schools in many, many ways, but that piece of ground in the evaluation process didn't, didn't come to the very top of the list of the ones that we needed to select. And again, I want, I want Sanford, their management, to know how appreciative we are as a board and as a district for the generous offer that they made.
I think when I have talked to people, I've gotten a lot of questions about where and why, and the residential aspect of that, and they, people look at Washington, and they look at Lincoln, and they look at Roosevelt, and there are houses within walking, biking, skateboarding, whatever you want to call it, distance for students to get to school. And so, when you look at the potential for all of the residential development, whether it's multifamily, single family, any of those things in the piece of land that we're talking about, having the new school on, I think that's an amazing opportunity for our kids. In addition to the public transportation aspect, the ability for our kids to be able to get to school on their own without having to rely on a parent or city transportation is a huge benefit to that population, too. So, when you look at the future development of that area, we have McGovern, we'll eventually maybe have an elementary school out there, I think that's just a huge booming area of town that will really suit our students well to start in a, kind of an area, and it's a neighborhood type of a high school as well. So, I think that's one of the perks for me, in addition to like the stuff that other people have mentioned.
Any other comments, questions, discussion on the pieces of land?
I just wanted to add, I mean, I think that, at least, I'll speak for myself, I think the steering committee really took a lot of information and did a lot of information gathering to select the site, and I feel pretty confident in the decision that they came to or the recommendation they came to, because I know a lot of conversations went into this and a lot of thought, and I really, I like this piece of land for many reasons. Public transportation, it's an already established neighborhood, the synergy with, with our tech schools and New Tech High, all of that, I think it's, it's a really good recommendation.
Any, any other questions, input? Dr. Maher, anything to add?
I think you've covered it all.
Okay. All right. I'm going to make a motion to authorize the president and business manager to enter into a contract with Journey Development Company and Journey Land Company to purchase 49.43 acres of land for a purchase price of $2 per square foot, $4,298.5, and to accept a $1 million donation toward the price of the land for a total cost to the district of $3.298.5, $3,298,500. And finally, authorizing the business manager to issue a manual check to complete the property transaction, and the understanding that the manual check will be reported to the manual check report as a subsequent school board meeting.
Second.
Second. Okay. Discussion on the motion. No one else from the public here to give any comment? We don't typically open it up twice during a meeting, but this is, as I said before, a 75 to 100-year decision, so if there's anyone that wishes to address us, we're certainly open to that. All right, thank you. We have a motion, a second, no further discussion. Then, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Legislative review is the next.
Before we move on, can I just, kind of on topic, kind of off topic, my mother-in-law was cleaning her mother's house out, and we have the first statesman from the Lincoln High School paper, and it's the dedication of Lincoln High School. On the inside, it has wonderful pictures of all the board, the school board that were there, and I just want to read from the architect's concerns when they built that. It says, "Many of the classrooms are without natural light or ventilation. Experience has proven that daylight is not necessary and is more frequently undesirable than is desirable, as is evident by the fact that most classrooms with large window areas have their drapes or Venetian blinds drawn shut and depend almost entirely on artificial illumination. The use of air conditioning and carpeting has been the subject of much debate and considerable criticism. However, these are not necessarily the extravagant refinements that many people consider unnecessary." So, I can only hope that as we move forward in building our school, that those are the things that we have to worry about. If anybody would like to take a look, I also have the floor plan, if you need to reference it, for Lincoln High School, if we need to use that for any thing, and the original Argus Leader open house at Lincoln High School. I just thought these were kind of cool to look at from 1966. It also lists all of the people who were admitted and discharged from the hospital on this thing, as times have changed. So, anyway.
You potentially just saved us a lot of time and money in terms of design development.
I do what I can. I do what I can. So, anyways, I just thought it was interesting. If anybody wants a little history lesson, you're welcome to take a peek.
I'm glad you did that after we gave the architect a chance to speak, because I don't want to hear what he's got to say right now, so. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll go on legislative preview.
Thank you. I'm going to pass around two different papers, pieces of, two different documents, and they'll, I've got extra if anybody in the audience wants to see them. The first is the large school group's tentative position paper. They're going to meet, I think, in another week or so to lock that down prior to the legislative session. And then the second, which will be coming down in just a second, is the one we look at every year, ASBSD's legislative resolutions, and President Alberti is next week going to go to the delegate assembly, and they're going to lock those downs, down at that time. We've, in the past, gone through every one of these, but we've kind of got a packed agenda today, so I talked with President Alberti before the meeting, and I think we're going to kind of go over four specific items and in a little more depth. If you want to, I can make that available for the audience, so I think you can pass it out there. If you want to look those over, and if you see something that you think should have been, you know, highlighted on, send me an email, and we can follow up at our next meeting and get that to President Alberti. Those thoughts before he goes off to the delegate assembly. So, first, I'm going to ask Bob Bray, our risk manager, to come up. He's going to, so we're going to jump around a little bit. On page seven, item B10, on page seven of the ASBSD draft resolutions, our risk manager, major, retired major general Bob Bray is going to talk about that issue.
Todd asked me if I had anything to say, naturally, but President Alberti and school board, thanks for the opportunity to speak about safety and security of our schools. As I look at the ASBSD resolution, I'm appreciative of the statement as it's, as it's made. There is no greater responsibility, I don't think, that a school district has than the safety and security of its students, its faculties, and its visitors. And so, the statement as it's written and its rationale, I think, are very appropriate. And clearly, the events of yesterday, just yesterday, and actually, quite frankly, from the beginning of school year, where we have had numerous cyber-type of threats presented us, really indicate the importance of school safety and security. Every day across our nation, we see these events playing out in many different ways, different types of threats that are presented to our various schools and districts. The Sioux Falls School District, I would tell you with great confidence, not only meets but exceeds in most cases what would be recognized today as standards for school safety and security, and that's a tribute to the leadership of this organization for many, many years, clearly with our current leadership as well, and your guidance in ensuring that we could maintain that level of competency to maintain that safety and security overarching. Kind of coincidentally, in your discussion about land and the new school, is the note that every day, science and technology continues to advance and to change. So, while today, I would tell you, I feel really secure that the Sioux Falls School District has what is necessary to provide for that safety and security, it's always changing. As we learned with the Florida incident, and from Sandy Hook, and from Columbine, those who intend to do harm, and weather conditions, all of those kind of events that present challenges to us, challenge the institutions that we put in place to, to prevent them from having a negative impact. So, as we look towards building those new schools, I know we'll take into account some of that new technology that's coming into place to ensure that safety is always there in place for our students, so they can feel comfortable when they come to school every day, their parents and families and friends can feel comfortable that they're coming to a safe learning environment. So, with that, I highly support and recommend supporting that resolution. with that, I highly support and recommend supporting that resolution.
There's no questions for Bob. On page seven, I'll just point you to the next one, number eleven on that. Alternative instruction oversight. And Dr. Noold, our assistant superintendent, who deals with alternative instruction, is going to walk us through that one.
Thank you. Currently, with the portion of this that deals with the alternative instruction and oversight, the resolution piece of that would provide a greater authority to approve or deny homeschooled exemption requests to the school board. Currently, that is an application that's submitted, and it's approved and goes through to the state. Part of the stance or statement that we'd made with that is instead of putting this responsibility back to the schools on that piece of it, there should be probably a greater focus on, and to strengthen the state oversights on that and accountability, because once the school board approves it, it would be hard to know after that fact how they carried out that homeschool instruction. So it's really that oversight that needed to be a greater piece of it. Currently, in the Sioux Falls School District, oh, this past year, I'll do the seventeen eighteen numbers, there were six hundred ninety-one homeschooled students. So if we were gonna be then given that obligation of overseeing each one of those after they were approved, because you're not gonna know what that accountability would be prior to when they put in the application, it would create quite a burden on going through to establish what that would be and how we're gonna cause that oversight and which students we would end up then removing or requesting to have the removal of the homeschooling status be taken into account. The vast majority of those, because last year we had thirty-eight that would have been seniors, approximately a third of those started out in the kindergarten, first, second grade, third grade. So in the elementary, majority of the individual students then enrolled back into the high schools, going through our middle school, high school age off of homeschool, some of which stay. So you can see the thirty-eight as seniors. Twenty-one of those started homeschooling in the high school. So just to kind of give some perspective with the numerics of that and the difficulty that that could be with six hundred ninety-one students to oversee who would be provided appropriate homeschool education after they've asked for that. So the easy part is on the forefront, the approval of. The difficulty would be the oversight of that. So it would be more so putting in the strength with the state's oversight and accountability with what can be and should be held accountable for homeschool students.
Okay. Thank you. Now, with the exciting stuff, go back to page nine, finance, capital outlay adjustments, and then this little correspondent, number two, on the Large School Group's legislative position paper as well. So the resolution from, a new resolution from, a proposed new resolution from ASBSD is support legislation changing the capital outlay statutes specifically designed to set the capital outlay growth cap at three percent. And their rationale is since the implementation of the capital outlay growth cap, schools have experienced growing pressure on the capital outlay fund. Adjusting the inflationary index to provide schools with a limit of three percent but without a floor would help minimize this pressure. Just one technical thing, I don't think they mean without the floor, because right now it's three percent inflation, whichever is less. And the whichever is less is actually a lower ceiling than the three percent. So if this stays, it probably needs just a slight adjustment to that language. But honestly, you know, this came up during our, you know, it all fits in. I guess it came up during our task force, looking at the facilities, the recommendation, the hundred ninety million dollar bond, what the pledge the board made as part of that proposal was directly related to this capital outlay fund, where we used to have a three dollar limit, and each year that gets clawed back a little bit. And we said between the two, for the next ten years, we would pledge that the two would add up to our three dollars, back to that three dollar, what we used to be able to levy up till a couple of years ago. This first year, it was thirteen cents more than what we were charging in the capital outlay fund. So I would have you look at the Large School Group's position, which is very similar to what we've talked about in the past. I'll just, I'll just read it quick for the audience. Proposed creating a per-student base for capital outlay funding, which allows schools to continue to receive three mils, or three dollars per thousand, on all property, both new and through reassessment, until the district reaches the state's district average per student base. Their rationale is the property taxes of local levy for the capital outlay fund equal on all property, while property tax levies for the general fund vary with different types of property, such as agriculture, commercial, and owner-occupied. Capital outlay taxes produce very high per-student allocations in districts that have high valuation and low student enrollment numbers, which led to twenty sixteen legislation to limit the ceiling to twenty-eight hundred dollars per student. Capital outlay taxes produce very low per-student allocations in districts that have low property valuations and high student enrollment numbers. This results in some districts having as little as approximately seven hundred dollars per student to use to meet their capital needs. General fund dollars are regulated to create equal funding opportunities on a per-student allocation, combined with a target ratio for students. Capital outlay funding will be more equalized if the rationale that caps the person, per-student allocation was also used to allow a base for the per-student allocation. For instance, you know, everybody looks at our valuation and realizes it's by far the largest in the state, and it is at over eleven billion dollars. However, we also have by far the most number of students at about twenty-four thousand, K through twelve. If you rank us in valuation, we're number one. If you rank us in valuation per student, we're about a hundred and thirtieth or a hundred and fortieth, somewhere in there, out of a hundred and fifty school districts. So we are far below average in what we can raise on our current limitations. And we've, in the past, highly supported this position, and actually like this one better than the ASBSD position. Any questions on that one? Now, we'll do one more, and then we can do the committee reports. If you go to page eleven.
Just a question. Are we going to decide whether or not to try to get ASBSDs to amend to look more like Large School Group?
Is that what we want?
You know, we're at a point where we're probably a little behind the eight ball, and it might be better for Kent to go into the delegation and try to argue it there. I can certainly call, but we're a week away, and that's, it seemed like where we got held up last year.
Okay.
By not getting out in front of it. So I think Kent's pretty well spoken and respected. And I think it'd be more effective to have him stand up in front of the delegation.
You really don't feel well today, do you?
You owe me my half of that.
That was not a backhanded compliment. I think you really meant that. You know, I think it would be, I think it would be wise for us to go and advocate for the three percent or cost of living, whichever is greater.
Yeah. We did for years, that was ASBSD's position. And they've changed that. And we'll, I mean, for us, this certainly makes more sense. And I think for most school districts in the state, this is gonna make more sense.
Yeah, I mean, many are, many are above the average, and I think that probably works out just fine for them. Those that are below the, and it tends to, you know, large school districts tend to be below the average.
Right.
That would be a better solution. I mean, ASBSD probably wanting maybe to please all districts.
That's what I ran into the last two years.
Yeah, maybe three percent inflation, whichever is greater, is better than three percent. And, you know, I think that's what they meant, wasn't quite worded right, but they meant three percent and drop the, or inflation, whichever is less. But three percent or inflation, whichever is greater, might be more amenable to them. And speaking of, we're gonna talk about that same concept here in a second as well.
Okay.
On another issue.
Please.
Yep. Okay.
On page eleven, then, last one I wanted to go through, and maybe spend the most time on, is the state aid inflation factor. And that's a, that's a new resolution as well. And I'm gonna, for the audience again, I'm gonna go through it. ASB supports adherence to the state aid inflationary, and this is in the general fund, is where we're talking about. We're not, before, just so the audience doesn't think we're talking about the exact same thing. That was capital outlay. No state aid involved in capital outlay. It's local property taxes. Now we're talking about the state aid inflation factor. ASBSD supports adherence to the state aid inflationary index by the governor and the legislature, and the event dollars above what is distributed in the index factor cannot be provided. Since the change in the state funding formula in nineteen ninety-five, the concept of an inflation factor to increase the state aid formula over time has been based on three percent or CPIW, whichever is less. The inflationary index has been appropriated by the legislature each fiscal year with the exception of FY twenty-eleven, twenty-eighteen, and twenty-nineteen. Inflation factor is critical to schools in order for them to maintain a consistent revenue source. There is growing concern when state dollars are limited. The inflation factor is optional, and the legislature is not required to adhere to the law. Schools need the index factor, and the legislature needs to fund at least the minimum index requirement. School districts must be appropriated at least the index factor to pay for the growing needs. A, provide salary increases to teachers, as well as maintain salaries for all personnel. B, meet inflationary increases in the operation of the schools. C, maintain safety and health-related services. D, provide current technology and instructional materials. The inflation factor cannot be optional. Appropriated funds for public schools is a constitutional requirement, and education should be a state budget priority. There are strong reasons to have an inflationary index, and the law must be followed. So generally, I agree with, we should follow the law, but the question is, is that we should get the, we should get the inflation factor right, the index factor. I would add that, that the state didn't follow the law, so on FY twelve, when it cut the per pupil allocation by eight point six percent instead of inflating it. And of course, the state has also provided, and the rationale does reference that a little bit, the state has also provided greater than required increases in several years. And I've been around, I was at the Department of Ed in the late nineties, and I've been here since two thousand and one. We've been dealing with this issue for now eighteen, nineteen, twenty years, and it was always three percent or inflation, whichever is less, is not enough, especially if you want to keep teacher salaries growing at a decent rate to keep up with our neighbors. Teacher salaries and benefits comprise about eighty-five, eighty-four, eighty-five percent of our general fund budget. And if you take out the federal money, which is supplement, not supplant, you can't, you know, you can cut the federal program, but if you do, you lose the revenue. So you can't balance your budget with that money. If you take out federal revenue, it's about state aid formula, the state aid formula, which grows three percent inflation, whichever is less, is almost ninety percent of our discretionary revenues. So if you want teacher salaries to grow at a decent rate, whatever decent is, your state aid formula has to grow at about that same rate. Otherwise, you have to cut something else to keep the, to keep the salaries growing. So just some, just some things to look at. If the state legislature had followed the law, i.e. three percent or inflation, whichever is less, since the beginning of the per pupil formula, the average state aid per pupil increase would have been two point oh three percent. However, the average increase in the per pupil formula has been two point three percent, because there has been times when they've, they've given more than the three percent inflation, whichever is less. So to ask them to follow the law, and just kind of put in an at least follow the law, but follow the law, watch what you wish for, you might get it. You know, we would be at, we'd be at a lower per pupil amount right now than we would if they had followed the law since nineteen ninety-seven. In comparison to those, either two point oh three or two point three, the state's average non-state aid general fund increase has been four point nine percent per year. So it isn't that the money hasn't been there necessarily to fund it at a higher rate, it's just that there's other priorities. And the state's average salary and benefits per FTE has been four percent since the beginning of the formula. So if you were to ask me, what's a good increase, number to increase our teacher salaries, you could, we could come up with lots of theories on what that should be. But one of the best might be to look at what the largest single government employer in the state of South Dakota, the state of South Dakota, is spending on its employees. And that's an average of salaries and benefits. That's an average of four percent per year, per growth, per employee. Couple other points, I guess. For the first twelve or thirteen years of the formula, the state aid increase and the per, and the salary increases for teachers across the state almost were exact. It was like two point eight percent per year and two point seven percent per year. And then, when state aid was cut eight point six percent, schools wisely figured out they weren't gonna reduce their average teacher salaries, two point six, or eight point six percent as well, so that there was a gulf then in the amount. And, and then it went to about four tenths of a percent difference. And then, when the state essentially made up for the eight point six percent cut with the increase, the large increase we received a couple of years ago, the half-cent sales tax, there was mandatory increases in the per-student allocation, so that gulf even grew a little bit more. So right now, there is a decent gulf, but just based on those two statistics we talked about a little bit earlier, eighty-five percent expenditures, salaries and benefits, ninety percent general of our revenues come from the state aid formula. Those two are gonna over time track real close to each other. So instead of some complicated formula increase saying, well, the state spends about four percent on its workforce, but it's actually been a little bit less lately, and trying to follow that, speaking with Dr. Maher, it's just like, why don't we look at something relatively simple, and it's kind of the same concept we just talked about, proposing that the index factor be three percent or inflation, whichever is greater. And if you had followed that formula since the beginning of the per-student funding in the state aid formula back in ninety-seven, our average increase would have been three point one-two. Now, that wouldn't quite keep up with the four percent, but it would be a lot higher than where we are right now. And it'd be funding you could be relatively certain of, year in and year out, and something you could base future salary increases on for your group, if the, if the, if the legislature followed the law. So half an agreement, we need to follow the law, but we need to get the law right first. And we think perhaps doing, basically having what they do, but changing to three percent inflation, whichever is greater, and then follow the law, would probably be the way to go.
Discussion on that?
I agree with Todd.
Okay. And that is the message that I'll carry to the delegate assembly.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Just that, feel free to read some of these over. We tried to highlight some of the, some of the ones we thought were more important. If there's specific issues, Kent, you were leaving.
Friday morning.
So if you.
Sixteenth.
Can email me. If you find anything you want addressed, we'll, we'll talk about it at another work session in December. But I'll try to get it to Kent ahead of his going to the meeting. And thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. Any other questions on legislative positions? All right. Then we will move on to committee reports. Cynthia, do you wanna start that?
Let me get my notes here, sorry. I was looking at something else. Let's see. Sioux Falls Affordable Housing, we have not had a meeting, and they're waiting for Mayor Tenhaikin to appoint some new members so that we can have a quorum and so forth of that. Calendar, I just talked to Jamie, there's gonna, next week, by the end of the week, hopefully, a new, a second parent survey is gonna go out to them about some dates and so forth on the calendar. And then the first meeting's gonna be in January sometime. It has not been set yet. Insurance, we're meeting next week to vote on two different companies for additional benefits that are, ones that are purchased out of pocket by the employees. And let's see, insurance. Oh, Sioux Falls Education Foundation, we're meeting next week. We're having a board retreat to kind of go over everything. Our employee, Allison Struck, has been doing a great job. She's really been out meeting with the public and making new relationships. And hopefully, maybe we'll have some announcements about some new partners and programs.
How'd the fundraising effort at Barrow House go?
Um.
Is she here? I don't think so.
She's not, I don't know that. It hasn't, we haven't got the minutes yet for next week, so I haven't seen that. It hasn't, we haven't got the minutes yet for next week, so I haven't seen that. So thank you.
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah.
There are a lot, I went, there were a lot of people there. So, it's like promising.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the only committee I have to report on is policy. We met Tuesday, it was yesterday. It's been a long week. Seems like a long time ago. And most of the, I don't have the list in front of me, but most of, we had two or three policies that had no changes. One, we were just bringing up to federal code for copyrighting. And then we've got the second reading coming back for the assignment of schools and just a few minor tweaks that they made. So just look for those when it comes out, but we haven't received any comments since the first reading, so just so you know that.
Um, PATH meets tomorrow, so I don't have an update on that. Cynthia talked about calendar, and then just an update, the workforce development meeting with the chamber has been kind of discontinued, disbanded until they decide what direction they're going, so I have not heard anything new on that. That's all I have.
Well, the only thing I have is on Sports Authority, getting the new director settled and getting things lined up. You know, our March is really full of basketball and wrestling, and so we've got a few different events through the fall that are more promotional, but trying to get him settled and acclimated is, is what the goal is, in meeting with community members. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Chamber, they've actually hired a couple people. Development Foundation Chamber, Mike Gray, who had been with the city previously, has been hired in workforce development, one of the positions that has been open, and I think they filled the other position also. So my guess is that there'll be something happening with the Workforce Development Committee now that they've got some people, or at least they're, they'll be starting soon. So that's what's going on there. Teacher of the Year, I just got an email from Andrea that they're going to need to pick some dates, and I avoided responding thinking she might not go after me, but I think she will be. Budget timelines, we'll be getting a report on that Monday night, set the budget timeline. The JDEI, Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, statewide steering committee met last week and they've, that started out just Sioux Falls and Rapid City. They've now rolled that out to Watertown, Mitchell, Aberdeen, and DePere. And so we got reports from the four newer sites. They, they've been up and running with that for a year to year and a half in each one of those smaller communities. And the, the challenges that the smaller communities are having are a lot of the same things that the larger school districts and the larger population counties have. One of the things that came out is younger kids getting into trouble and having to look at what the alternatives are that are available for them, which is, of course, one of the things that we discuss here is younger kids getting into more trouble, and that's, clearly is not just our issue, it's across the state. So that's all I've got for committees. Anything else to add for the good of the cause? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you all.